Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chair. Seeing no such notification either online or in the room, pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30a, Section 20 until March 31, 2025, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. I think that's the last time I'll have to read that paragraph. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203386491, pound sign, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First order of business is establish a quorum. Mr. Nacastro.
Present.
Mr. Shell is present. Ms. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Deikin.
Present.
And Mr. Matters.
Present.
Tonight, we begin with an executive session, and so we'll have to excuse everyone in the room who is not part of that executive session, and I will invite Mr. Nacastro to make a motion to take us into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Select Board go into executive session under Massachusetts General Law. It's Chapter 38, Section 21, parentheses, three, parenthesis, "to discuss strategy with respect to litigation," parentheses, "32 Mill Hill Road," parenthesis, "if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body," and the chair so declares, "with return to open session."
Second.
Thank you. I think that was Ms. Davis. All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Deikin.
Aye.
And Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Okay, we're in executive session. I'll invite our attorney.
Or minus one to three inch PVC conduit encased in concrete from proposed hand hole HH nine over H three four A to proposed hand hole HH nine over H three five B to provide a new underground service to the customer located at three ninety Old Harbor Road. The public is welcome to attend the meeting in person or participate via the link in the meeting's posted agenda. All interested parties are encouraged to participate. Sign the select board.
Thank you. Do we have Ms. Jackson online for N star? Welcome.
I am here.
Hello.
Thank you. Marissa Jackson with EverSource. It was actually recently brought to my attention that this is along Route twenty eight. If that is correct, I would like to kindly withdraw. We would need to send a request to the Mass State Highway.
And it is on Route twenty eight, yes. So we'll accept your request to withdraw.
Okay. Thank you kindly.
Okay. Um, next, um, did you?
There were no announcements or public agenda requests.
There was one announcement. I think Sharon Drown wanted to make an announcement regarding probably about the tax bills. Welcome.
Sharon Drown, Treasury Collector. I just wanted to announce that the fiscal year twenty five second installment tax bills are going out this week. They're due May first. They must be in by four P M. At the Treasury Collector's office on May first.
Thank you. Um, we have, well, I can't even count them. We have several items on the business agenda. I'll come back to public comments in a minute. We have a request to designate a select board liaison to the beautification committee. We have a proposal for a non-binding public opinion advisory ballot question. We have a, an Earth Week proclamation proposal. We have a considering acceptance of a donation and installation of thirty tree labels in Kate Gould Park and Chase Park. We have a report from the, with respect to the other, the OPEB trust fund from the financial advisor and the town treasurer. We have a, an update regarding the Fish Pier South jog pedestrian walkway. We have a consideration of accepting a new charge with respect to the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee, et cetera. We have an update. We have an update on the mooring software system from the Harbor Master. We have a town landing special use permit application. And finally, we have the town manager's monthly report for February. With that, I will invite public comments on the business agenda. I don't see anybody here in the room. Is there anybody online? I don't see them. Do you, Jill?
Just giving someone a second. No, I don't see anybody.
Okay. With that, we'll start with the request to designate a select board liaison to serve on the Chatham Chamber of, Chamber and Merchant Association Beautification Committee. I don't know if there's anybody here to, I'll just start and say that this started with a, unless somebody's online.
Angela Bukar.
Is Angela online? Welcome, Angela. I'll let you take it off of my plate. Thank you.
Thank you. So as part to what we're doing with the brick funds that we're, as we installed the brick pathway in Cakel Park, and what we're really looking to do is ask a liaison to work with us in the public, private partnership that we're looking to develop with funds grown from the brick installation, but also the beautification of what we can do with Cakel Park and also other fundraising efforts around town, whether it be with the beaches, the parks, and other efforts. We're really looking to have the opportunity to join together and make this something that is opportunistic, certainly from a fundraising effort, but also just to be able to join in a, in a public-private partnership.
Thank you. And I believe that, I don't know if Jill has assigned or otherwise offered DPW representative to be a liaison to that committee, and the request is also that there be a select board representative liaison to that committee.
Sure. So I've asked Tom Barr to participate.
And so the request here is for a select board liaison. It originally came to me. I'm happy to do it, but I'm also happy to cede it to anybody else who has an interest and would like to do it.
Mr. Chair, I'd be willing to do it, given the recent discussion about Kate Gould Park, art in the park, and et cetera. I think, in my deep interest in landscaping and gardening, and the fact that I'm retired frees up my Thursdays. It is somewhat dependent, I think the Cemetery Commission last time met on Wednesdays. If they moved to Wednesday, then I'll be able to do it Thursdays.
Okay. Does anybody want to compete?
Anybody want?
No, no. I'm supportive.
I do actually have some ideas about.
I'm all in favor of that. Good for you. Okay.
Can I just ask, Angela, so is this work limited to Kate Gould Park and Chase Park, or is it townwide that you're looking at?
No, sir. So, yeah, so part of the reinvestment of the funds that came from the brick pathway installment is, from the consumer's perspective, it was an understanding that that money would be reinvested back in Cakel Park. So we really want to start there and then look to other opportunities, fundraising efforts with our conservation commission partners and others around town, installation of memorial benches, certainly at beaches, should that be an opportunity. But I think it's, this is the start of where we need to begin and talk about what is, and it goes really deep into details about kind of where we need to look at it from a landscape perspective, from a, you know, the tree perspective, and all of the different landscaping challenges that we face, but also want to use the park as an entertainment place as well to hold our events. So there is a commonality. I think Kate Gould is the first part, but how can we then look at our reinvestment and dollars and fundraising efforts to really just beautify all parts of town? But this is the beginning.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
I would support Jeff being the liaison. I'm happy he's willing to do it.
I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro. Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
And Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Angela.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you.
Next, we have a proposal. Well, actually, this is, I guess this will go on the, on the ballot because they have the necessary signatures, a non-binding public opinion advisory ballot question relating to the discharge of particulate material into the air from the pilgrim. And we don't have anybody here to speak to it, at least that I see, unless there is somebody here. I looked through the, it's an awful lot of material. I did look through it. It appeared that this is something that would be a good idea to bring to the governor's attention and the Attorney General's attention, but I'll invite comment from the board.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm in support of this as well. The whole tech issue has been an ongoing saga for the Cape and Islands. The power plant itself has been an ongoing saga for a long time. Whether you're a proponent of nuclear energy or not, this is a multinational, you know, company that's cleaning it up, and I think that they want to have, do it in a way that isn't necessarily in the best interest of our marine-based economy and our environment. So there's been a lot of pushback in the past on this company and their cleanup efforts, and this is just one more thing that could add to the, to the portfolio to keep the pressure on.
Corey?
No, I'm fully supportive of endorsing this. I think, in from past actions, if my memory serves, we've taken a similar position. I think we want to stay steadfast with that and continue our support of this philosophical approach. So, yes.
Jeff?
Yeah, I think I absolutely support it. I think it's a great thing that save our, save our bay folks and the downwinders are working so hard at this. There are various ways to clean up nuke plants, and we want to keep these folks honest. This may not be the best way. There are other, other ways to clean it up. So anyway, they tried to dump the water in the bay, that got stopped, and now they're doing it through the, through evaporation. So I really think that this is a very important issue we got to get on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean?
Yes, I'm supportive. I was just looking at the statute. It's a little unclear about the timing. We should probably take a vote to place it on the ballot, just to be safe.
Okay.
And I would suggest that the language be reviewed by staff, the language of the question be reviewed by staff with town council. Would you plan to do that before you finalize the language that goes on the question?
Kathy has just noted it has been reviewed by council.
Okay. All right. So I'll move that, that we place this question on the ballot.
Second.
Just a question, is there a reason, I was puzzled by the question mark at the end of the, of the, the proposal. Is that, it's not a big deal, but it just seems strange that.
Do we have the language?
Oh, I'm sorry. It begins, shall the people? I withdraw the question.
Is that the language we're going with?
Town Council did not suggest any edits to the language as presented by the petitioner.
Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
And Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. And Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Done. Thank you. Next, we have the Earth Week proclamation. It is suggested that we proclaim the week of April twenty one to twenty five, twenty twenty five, as Earth Week in the town of Chatham. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Lauren Arcamano, the executive director of the Chatham Conservation Foundation. If you have any questions about Earth Week.
You want me to read the proclamation?
I, I don't know. I think we can probably get by with a motion to approve the proclamation as set forth here.
Okay. I'd like to hear about some of the events you guys are planning.
Terrific. We have.
If you don't mind.
No, not at all.
There are four guided walks throughout town, two, two tree walks, one at Sylvan Garden, and another one at Frostbush Creek. That's also a tree identification walk. We have a public forum on Tuesday, which is Earth Day. Our guest speaker is Andrew Gottlieb of APCC. On Wednesday, the Friends of Chatham Waterways will be launching their water pledge at the Orpheum Theater and having four short documentaries with a panel discussion. On Saturday, we have our townwide cleanup, and that will be, will cover approximately twenty-five miles of town roadways, landings, and other areas.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
I'm going to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to proclaim the week of April twenty first through twenty five, twenty twenty five, as Earth Week in the town of Chatham, but your proclamation says twenty, April twenty six. Which one is it?
Twenty five.
Twenty five. As Earth Week in the town of Chatham.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
And Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
And Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have DeeDee Holt to present a donation installation of thirty tree labels in Kate Gould Park and Chase Park. Welcome, DeeDee.
Good evening. Thanks for putting us on the agenda tonight. Appreciate it. Friends of Trees proposes to install or affix some tree labels, tree ID labels in both Kate Gould Park and Chase Park. And so I'm asking you to approve the project, as well as to accept the labels as a gift to the town. The tree warden, Tom Barr, by the way, is fully in support of this project. The labels themselves are similar to the ones already in Chase Park that identify those trees that are on our mobile tree tour, except they're smaller. They're actually identical to the labels that were affixed recently to trees in Sylvan Gardens. It just has the common name of the tree, the scientific name of the tree, and whether it's native or not. The, the trees in both Chase and Kate Gould Park are, they're many beautiful trees, really great specimens of this particular species. As far as we know, some of those trees date back to when the parks were donated to the town. Chase was about nineteen fifty and Kate Gould in the thirties. So those trees are nice, nice mature trees, and we thought that drawing attention to them helped, you know, as an educational effort to get people to appreciate and care more about trees. The labels themselves are fixed with a screw. It's perfectly fine, according to Arbor Day and everybody else. And on the other side of the label is a spring. So as the tree grows, it pushes the spring up, and then we just go in and push back, screw back the tree, the screw, to give the tree more room so that the label doesn't interfere with the growth of the tree. So, I mean, that's what we are hoping you'll approve and accept it by the town.
Thank you. Any questions?
Do you have any questions, by the way? I'm sorry. I shouldn't ask that.
No, that's okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the donation and installation of thirty tree labels to be placed on trees in Kate Gould Park and Chase Park as outlined by Chatham Friends of Trees. With thanks.
All those in favor, Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. And Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thanks for the labels. The OPEB Trust Fund Annual Review, Sharon and Bartholomew and Company as the advisor.
So the town of Chatham has another post employment benefits trust with oversight by a board of trustees. Kathleen Saganowitz and Michelle Newcomb from Bartholomew and Company are here this evening to present the fiscal year twenty twenty four annual review of the Chatham OPEB Trust Fund. Bartholomew and Company has been managing the OPEB Trust since two thousand and thirteen. With regard to fiscal impact, interest rates for these funds are dedicated by the market. The town receives consistent fiscal oversight and management of these trust funds. The current yield on portfolio holdings as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty four was at two point zero eight percent. Time-weighted return net of fees was five point nine eight percent. The ending market value for the OPEB Trust as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty four was six million, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. At the end of the presentation from Bartholomew, it is respectfully recommended that the board vote to accept receipt of the fiscal year twenty twenty four annual review as presented by Bartholomew and Company.
Hello, my name is Michelle Newcomb. Just a very quick update on our company, if anybody is new to us, but we are an independent investment firm based in Western Massachusetts. We've been in business since nineteen ninety-four. Our fir, excuse me, our firm has over five billion dollars in assets under management, of which over three billion represents municipal funds that we're investing across about three hundred and forty municipal entities across the state of Massachusetts. About, excuse me, allergies kicking in. But we have, we have over six hundred million dollars that we're managing in OPEB funds across about two hundred accounts. So we have a very deep understanding of Mass general law, great relationships with the auditors and the actuaries. And with that, we're going to talk about the performance of the, of the OPEB account. We do have, you know, you have the June thirtieth numbers. We also have up-to-date numbers, and I'll let Kathleen go over and go through the performance, but please feel free to ask questions as we go along.
Yes, please, you know, interrupt at any time, but I'll just kind of go through our, our normal portfolio report here and just touch on some of, obviously, as if there's nothing going on in the market and the world right now. We could talk about, a little bit about that as well. But as was stated, you know, everything, we like to show as up-to-date as we can, and so here we have, as of the end of last month, the total portfolio value of just over seven million dollars here. This page, though, this is our, kind of our visual, I sort of call it our rock formation, but really, this is, if you get anything out of this, it's just showing how the allocation of this portfolio has changed over time. So we've been managing the Chatham OPEB portfolio since October of two thousand and thirteen, and like a lot of OPEB portfolios, especially in the beginning, at that time, the portfolios were allocated a little bit more conservatively, just by the nature of the job of the treasure collector. It's sort of ingrained that we should be investing for safety, liquidity, and yield. But OPEB is quite different. You know, you need it to grow. You have a large unfunded liability. And so over time, the allocation has taken on a little bit more of a, you know, equity versus bonds allocation. And so right now, as it stands, you're at about seventy percent in equities and thirty percent in bonds, and I'll touch on that a little bit more as we go through. So on the next page here, big picture, this is probably our favorite page, just because it really tells the whole story on this left-hand side. Since inception, again, that October of two thousand and thirteen, you can see what the contributions have been into the account, all of the activities. So then you have your realized gains, your unrealized gains, dividends and capital gains, management fees to our firm back, you know, since two thousand and thirteen, all of that to say a total gain after fees, so net of fees of just over one point seven million dollars, which equates to an annualized return, so a year-over-year return of six point one six percent.
And just to add, the June thirtieth, June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty four, those returns were, I believe, right around five ninety-nine. So it was in the same ballpark as, as it was at fiscal year end for FY twenty four.
And I would say, too, for how this is invested now, as I said in the beginning, you know, this was a little bit more conservative in the beginning, and now it's at a seventy-thirty. Our target return, you know, con- Our target return, you know, conservatively, obviously no guarantees, but we are shooting for around 6% to 7% annualized return. That's what we're looking for. That's, you know, it's, it's enough to grow, beat inflation, of course, and all of those things. So I would just mention that.
Yeah, go ahead and help, please, excuse me.
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I was the one that emailed you prior to the meeting. You emailed the treasurer regarding the 2.08% as of June 30. Could you explain what that is? Because obviously, as of June 30th, 2024, overall, we were, we were in the 5% or 6% range of income.
Right, yes. So just, yeah.
Yeah. Yes. So current yield, we actually took that off of this report more recently because it was, it's caused some questions. And really, what current yield is, it only refers really to the bonds and some of the dividend-paying stocks. So it's, it's really just looking at what the current income on any of those investments are. But in the OPEB, we're investing for not just income, but also growth. So, you know, the companies that have kind of led the market, let's say, are more of your technology companies and types, those sort of innovative companies don't have a yield. So that's why that 2% looks quite low, because we invest in those, you know, technology companies because we want them to grow, not for their dividend. So it's not a, a good representation of an OPEB portfolio, but we didn't, we've always included it. We just changed.
We did just change it.
So.
I just think that was, I'm one of the trustees, and
Yes.
We, we met recently, and I just didn't want the public to think that the fund was not.
Correct. You don't want to have that confusion.
That it was underperforming. It's not.
And that's one of the reasons why we, we took it off. We use that number a little bit more when we're talking about some of the other buckets of money that we manage from municipalities, whether it's a bucket of general fund money or longer-term trust funds that have to stay invested under legalist that are more income-driven. So, yes.
So overall, the fund is in, the, the recent performance of the fund has been in the range of close to 6%.
Yes. Yes, it has.
And that's what your, you know, your actuary will be looking at. They're looking at the allocation of 70/30, all of the targets for each of those asset classes and projecting out total return. So not current yield, you know, unless it comes to the bonds, but they're projecting out, you know, how will these funds do 30 years from now? That's kind of, it's sort of funny math, but that's what they're trying to do. So that 6%, it's probably close to your discount rate if I had to guess.
Yes.
But that's really your number. Yeah.
And just the history is that when we started managing OPEB in 2009, we had, all the treasurers across the state of Massachusetts were used to the legalist. They were used to investing for safety, liquidity, and yield. And so some of them had, didn't have committees set up yet. It's the treasurer, the trustee, and the custodian. And so it, we moved people up the risk profile as they got more comfortable. And I would say majority of our OPEB portfolios now are, are all at 70/30. And some still sit in a, a little bit less conservative, but I would say the majority, about 85%, 90% are at 70/30. So when you look at the returns, the software is calculating as if this portfolio had always been at 70/30, but it had actually moved up risk models from 2013 until this time.
So just, normally, this would be a relevant factor. There, there's no demand for, for, for any withdrawals. Is that?
Not, no, not at this time. It's in the accumulation phase. Everybody's trying to reach their mountain of their unfunded liability.
And so that's the, that's the timeframe that we're looking at here in terms of the way you're thinking about your horizon?
Correct, yes. And we advise that you speak with your, your actuary when talking about cash flow, about when is the, the time that you would start drawing on it. That's an actuarial question, and they can help with that. But yes, the, the investment time horizon in our eyes is that 20, 30-year time period.
Right, okay. Which gives you a little more comfort with your 70/30.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It does, yes. Yeah, so just, just to finish up this page, on the right-hand side, you just have your fiscal year so far. So not a full fiscal year, but here you can
see, you know, the town's contributed about $485,000 for the fiscal year and all that same activity. So an annualized return of about 6%. March has been a crazy month. So, you know, one of the things we say is for OPEB, we try not to scrutinize the short-term timeframes because to that point exactly, we don't have a crystal ball. And if we said that, that would be a red flag about what was, you know, to happen. We have the benefit with OPEB of thinking about it. Sometimes we say it's like a teenager investing. And so you, time is on your side, market cycles are on your side. So that's just kind of a philosophy.
Yes. And just to, just to add, we have a dedicated investment team in the office that is constantly looking at these portfolios and the performance, the performance of the funds, meeting with portfolio managers, doing their due diligence, and managing these behind the scenes, rebalancing and making changes as they see fit, as we are discretionary advisors.
Yes. And here for, you know, a good visual, I really like this chart here at the bottom, you can see the gold line is what has been put into the account, and then that blue line is your market value. So again, you know, it took several years to kind of start building this up and get it going, but then you have some good market value growth there. You have a COVID-era dip, and then, you know, the market's been quite strong. So we're, we're happy about that visually. It's a nice graph. Just moving along here, I know a lot of numbers on this page, but this is, your portfolio is this top line, meaning that the town's OPEB portfolio. And then today, the best benchmark is this second one down 55, 25, 20, equities, bonds, and liquid alternatives. And so as Michelle said, we're comparing this portfolio as if it had always been a 70/30. So just kind of keep that in mind. But I, I just want to mention it because we say 70/30, it's a little easier to say rather than 55, 25, 20. But I just want to mention, we do have an allocation here to alternatives, which is sort of the cop-out answer for what an alternative is, is it's pretty much anything that isn't a stock or a bond. And so really, what those are there for is really for risk-adjusted returns. It tends to be, you know, if the market's crashing, you want your alternatives to kind of be the ballast to some of that performance. So those are there to help, as Michelle says, which I love, more ride a kiddie coaster up rather than a, a crazy roller coaster. Because at the end of the day, even though this is, this portfolio is like a teenager investing, we could say it's still municipal town funds. And we don't want to take on excess risk or behave, have too much volatility, I guess, is.
Trying to minimize volatility as much as we possibly can.
Yes. So that's some trailing performance. This here is the same thing. It's just calendar year by calendar year on this left-hand side. So you can see each year going back to 2013, we tend to say, which is kind of funny, we, we tend to try to say that, you know, we shouldn't expect double-digit returns up or down. But really, you can see since 2019, that's exactly what we've had, are double digits either mostly up, fortunately. 2022 was a really difficult year, but 2023, 2024. And so far for 2025, your calendar year performance, as I said, through, you know, today, you're probably more flat-ish, just because March has been quite volatile, given everything going on. But still, you know, it's OPEB. If, if it's up 20% and it's down 10%, at the end of the day, if we're getting that 6% to 7%, you know, annualized, it's really what we're looking for.
Yes.
And then finally, everything else, these are all of the holdings. So as Michelle said, we have an investment team. I used to be on the investment team, which is kind of why I can blab probably too much about some of this stuff. This is where they spend, you know, every day watching these investments, making sure we like what they're doing, making sure they're performing the way we expect them to, and rebalancing. So, for example, your very largest top holding here, growth, large-cap growth companies, those technology companies, you know, those have done really, really, really well, especially last fiscal year. And so when that's happening, the investment team will go in, they'll sell some, they'll take some gains, and reallocate to the rest of your portfolio. So I just mention that because we're behind the scenes doing a lot of that. As discretionary investors, we don't, you know, call up and say, hey, we'd like to do a little bit of this or a little bit of that. We have your investment policy, which has your targets. We work within those ranges.
Right. And then we, we work to meet with the treasurer, the committee, at least once a year, ideally twice a year. We always say we're happy to meet as little or as much as our clients like to see us.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, I love, I love this slide and the slide before it for, over its life and also for this fiscal year. Couple of questions. I did, did look at the investments and compared it to our, our policy, our investment policy, and we're well within each range according to the policy. So I, I'm comforted there. I think we made a conscious decision some 10 years ago or so to get more aggressive. So, and that has played out. I love your analogy of the teen, you're kind of in our teens. Maybe even in our late teens. It depends on what it kind of looks like. But, but the, the, the graph itself looks very strong. It looks great. And I think over time, we'll, we'll get to our goal of having full, full funding and be able to draw down funds. May take a while. I recollect, I thought it was gonna be 10 to 15 years we were planning on. I was a little surprised here, 20 to 30. But I thought within 15 years, we might be at a place where we could actually start to be self-funded here and, and, and use this as a, as a funding vehicle. I have kind of a nitty-gritty, stupid mechanical question, but when we send you money, so our contributions this year thus far have been $486,000, when do you put that money to work? When, when, when it lands? And do you have a, your, does your investment committee do that? And how quickly does it get to the market?
So as soon as we get it, we invest it.
Okay.
There have been cases where we would talk to treasurer, if they were worried about what was going on, we might say, maybe you want a dollar-cost average. In reality, we don't always recommend that, but typically, you know, we see treasurers just want to get whatever you've allocated in, and we will that day invest it. Just because we can't time the market, you know, that's not what we.
I wanted to hear that. And the cash, the cash position itself tells us that you take the money and invest it right away, because it's like half of.
Yes, yeah.
So it's like, it's like no cash, which is, which I think is the right thing.
Yeah.
But, but does your investment committee get together and say, okay, we got new money coming in from, from all the towns, and boom, this is what we're gonna do with it? You have, you have favorite days for bonds and?
I wish. No, we do, so we do have an investment committee that does meet monthly, although I feel like we meet more than that. So we're meeting more about changes we want to make across the board, not necessarily, we just got, you know, $100,000 from here and here today, what should we do? We'll look at that day. We'll look at the portfolio, and let's say it's a really tough day for equities. We're probably buying more equities just because of that timing. But it, it comes down to your allocation. You know, we're not gonna overbuy anywhere, make like a tactical decision, I guess, is my point. But depending on the day, based on how the markets moved, you might see, maybe we just buy all bonds for one contribution because of the market. If that makes sense.
Just a quick follow-up. And how many times a year, if you will, do you kind of rebalance? Do you really take a hard look at our portfolio and say, flood out of whack here, let's do this, this, sell some of this and buy some of that? How often do you do that?
Yeah, so by mandate, we do it at least annually. It is way more often than that in reality. That's just our check at the end of the fiscal year to make sure we're balanced. But throughout the year, we're making changes, oftentimes because we're watching, like I said, for example, the large-cap growth, we're in there, we know across the board, okay, all of our clients are overweight. Let's see by how much, and let's take some of that down. Or we'll go in and we'll say, another thing we've talked about was, on the international equity side, you know, we'll, we'll say as a whole, as an investment committee, there's a lot of geopolitical risk. Maybe we want to relook at some of the countries we own, for example. And that was a conversation we had about a year ago and continue to have, and adjust slightly. So, you know, I'm over answering your question, but to make sure you're in line with your bench, with your benchmark, with your targets, it's at least annually. When we're making small changes, it's a lot more often. Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of points. And at, at one point or another, every member of this board has served on that, on that trust. Jeff and I are the current trustees. And some of these points, I think, came from our recent, most recent meeting. We do not invest in individual stocks, right? It's all funds.
Correct.
Okay. And Jeff, I think you're right. I think, back in, I think it was 2020, when we made a conscious decision as trustees to try to pay this, try to reach the target, which is a moving target, as we know, in 15 years. So we still have another 10 years to try to reach that. And we are unique in the sense that in addition to an annual contribution, which has been averaging about $150,000, we're taking it from the overlay traditionally, we also have the 1.5% surtax, which no other community in Massachusetts has, to my knowledge. So I think you reassured us at the recent meeting, that most recent meeting, that we are near the top, are among the top municipalities or other funds in terms of reaching the target that we have, which is 16 million. But is that, that's, can you, I just think it's important for the public to know that, that I think this fund is being well, well managed by the town.
Thank you. Yes. And your actuary actually can have that exact percentage of where you fall to. But yes, I believe so. And so I would encourage, we can talk to Sharon about reaching out to Seagull, you know, your actuary, to, to really see exactly where you're, you're standing. But.
It would be good to get that information, Sharon, at some point, yeah.
Yes.
And you, so your liability then is 16 million, correct-ish?
That's about where it is.
Yeah, so, I mean, you're, yeah, they, they'll tell you you're.
You're up there.
You're up there. Yes.
Yeah, which is great.
Okay, thank you.
Just, the, the, the trust is not a taxpayer, right?
No.
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 Okay.
Nope.
Thank you.
No, it's under the town's tax ID.
Yes.
Yes, right now. So. There have been a few communities that have gotten their own 04 number, but even still.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions?
There's another document that we just got tonight, but.
Oh, yeah. So, that, we just put together some market and economic slides, if, you know, for the sake of time, I think we were just gonna see if you had questions or follow-up on that. But that's just some of our marketing material, to be honest. The fiscal year, at the end of the fiscal year is when we have a more substantial packet with, you know, commentary and client list and lots of visuals. This was just a little, a little.
Couple of slides.
Couple of slides, yeah.
So with that in mind, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that the board accept the receipt of the FY 2024 annual review presented by Bartholomew and Company Incorporated relative to the OPEB Trust Fund.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nick Castro.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Appreciate it. Appreciate the time.
Very good.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Berman on the, the walkway at the Fish Pier South Jog pedestrian walkway. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Greg Berman, you're Director of Natural Resources, here to chat about the pedestrian or proposed pedestrian walkway at the South Jog of the Fish Pier. I don't think I have to explain to anyone where the Fish Pier is or the South Jog, but for those watching at home, that red box is the area that we're looking at, at the Fish Pier. We do have some preliminary designs, engineered plans, and the highlighted area is the spot that we're actually talking about for this walkway. So that's a 70-foot-long, six-foot-wide walkway that leads out to that floating dock. And it's not just a walkway. That smaller rectangle over to the left, that's actually a, a concrete foundation wall because there is some erosion along the edge of the asphalt right there. So that's an additional portion to this project. I, I believe I had talked about cantilevered walkways in the past, and we've moved away from that particular design. And just to, one thing to kind of add, one reason why we went towards the full pile-supported walkway in addition to the cost savings, you don't really see it in this crude cartoon, but that cantilever walkway actually had pilings, but they were fender piles. So instead of using fender piles, now we're using the piles to actually support the walkway. And the intention of either of these designs is to get rid of the jersey. is to get rid of the Jersey barriers, move the pedestrians over to that walkway and away from the high-traffic areas used for commercial fishing. Um, again, it may not show it here, but with those Jersey barriers out of the way, now you can get two vehicles in there instead of just the one. Uh, that was always the intention, to be able to have this area for the commercial fish and separate it from, uh, tourists and pedestrian traffic. So you probably had heard some numbers early on about that this could potentially cost up to seven hundred thousand dollars. We're talking about the original waterfront bonds. We did go back and value engineer with, um, our consultants, and we did have them explore eight different options. Uh, really, there's four options with two different framing, uh, types. The top four are all pressure-treated framing. The bottom four are plastic timber framing. And then each one of the options, the top one is the plastic timber decking, the tracks, kind of plasticky boards you've probably seen. Concrete decking is what we've kind of seen around, uh, it's very similar to the floating docks and would match up with the concrete, um, uh, retaining wall area that's already there. Our aluminum gangway decking option, uh, was certainly the cheapest, but we did have concerns about how it would hold up in that environment, and especially the maintenance, how we would get out there and actually repair it if it was damaged. Uh, the last one that we added was a fiberglass reinforced plastic. Typically, that's a grated decking, kind of looks like honeycomb. Uh, it can be very strong. It can allow kind of water flow through it. Uh, kind of surprising to us, it was one of the most expensive options. And, um, in conjunction with the Harbormaster, Costa Resource Director, myself, and the engineer, we did kind of fall on to the concrete decking, uh, with plastic timber framing. The plastic timber framing is supposed to have significantly more durability, longevity, especially in that marine environment that's very close to the sand and water on the outside of that jog. Uh, so that is the preferred option amongst those eight. With that option, um, they did go ahead and cost it out with the various materials and labor. Um, that's our full engineered, uh, I'm sorry, almost full engineered design. The next step would be go to final design and potentially out to bid. So that image down there on the lower left, you can see the, um, existing wall with those kind of wooden bumpers. That was always the intention, to have the vehicles within that area. The Jersey barriers were kind of a temporary, uh, change, certainly lower than the other wall. Um, it was safe enough for a temporary basis, but we'd really like to remove that traffic. If you do have, want firsthand experience about, you know, how those interactions happen at the Fish Pier, we do have some Harbormaster staff here. Uh, but pedestrians will often walk over, uh, the chains, go over the Jersey barriers. We could potentially raise the elevations of those, but it's, it's just not, uh, going to work as is originally designed.
Greg, just.
Yes.
So you're saying there won't be any at, walking access on, to the beach from the Fish Pier?
No, I'm sorry. So the, the Jersey barriers would be removed?
Uh-huh.
And then, um, you would still be able to get to the beach over there? It's just the walkways on the outside of that, uh, area.
Got it. Thank you.
So, yeah. Um, and this is the last slide. I did just.
See, I'm sorry, Greg. Hold on. Jeff has a question.
Just a, a design question. So the walkway, you're, you're recommending cement with the, with the plastic structure, um, and there's going to be a concrete wall between that walkway and the parking lot.
Correct.
So the concrete, the, the, the concrete barriers are gone, right? The, the Jersey barriers are gone?
Correct. The Jersey barriers are not there. The concrete wall is actually already there. So that, that concrete wall you're looking at right there, that is a concrete wall.
Okay.
That would stay there. It's just us adding that walkway and then the, uh, railing and, uh, pile support on the outside.
So that gets you from the stairs coming down by the Harbormaster's office. You take a right and you go through the parking lot and then down to the South Jog. That's.
Along the edge of the parking lot.
On the edge of the parking lot, yeah, into the South Jog. Is there a way for pedestrians? And is it allowed for pedestrians to get access to the south side of the observation desk? The, the, oh, dock. Observation dock.
Uh, you mean the upper level of the?
The upper, yeah, deck, deck, the observation deck. Is there, I know there's access on the north side of it, but is there access for pedestrians on the south side of it, is what I'm asking?
No, I, I believe they would still kind of go along that north side to go up. Uh, it's not really intended to have them, uh, travel in this area, because it is a high commercial area.
There's no stairway on the south, south end?
Well, there, yeah, there, there is a stairway. I guess I thought you were talking about walking this way.
No, I'm talking about the stairway on the south, on the south side of the Fish Pier that gets you up to the observation desk.
That's the emergency exit.
Okay.
Um.
So that's not used with regularity, Jason?
No, it's, it's blocked off and it's used only for emergency exits.
Gotcha. Thank you. Yep, good. Thanks.
So at this point, you know, this is potential.
Shereen?
What's the timeline on this? Do we have one yet?
We are, uh, at the phase where we begin procurement for the final engineering and bringing them onboard for, uh, the bid process and construction. So the bid process would, you know, proceed over the next several months. Construction couldn't begin until fall anyway. We're still waiting on a, a permit or two, but we do expect them to happen this summer. Um, but that's the phase we're at, is, you know, finish the design, go out to bid, get those bids, come back to you, show you the bids, see if they're, um, you know, within the ballpark of what we expect. Uh, our construct, uh, construction estimates right now are just under three hundred thousand. Um, and that's with a twenty-five percent contingency.
And I just stating the obvious, that the construction would not fall into the busy tourist and fishing season, but would be, I mean, we'd, we'd have to be part of that process to understand that we need to move this along to a certain point, that it's done in the winter.
Correct. Yeah. It, the bid process and everything, it would be phased to start, you know, in fall.
Jeff?
Assuming the money comes from the, the bond, the waterfront bond monies that we have, that we have four, four hundred thousand dollars available to, to fund this?
We do. Greg, do you have the balance after this project for the bond?
Um, I don't have the exact.
If not, there is, but there is at least four hundred thousand that's available for this.
Yeah. So we, we've currently borrowed, I believe Carrie told me, with about six hundred thousand left in the original bond borrowing, um, that, that's already been borrowed. We have, I believe, one point six, uh, total in there. So this, right now, we're only asking for the, uh, ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty for the engineering. Um, when we come forward after we get the bids in, you know, I would assume that we still have capacity in that original twenty seventeen bond to cover it. But at that point, hopefully, we're also going to have, uh, our bids in for the return of the boathouse, and we'll know what the full cost of that is. So we, we want to make sure that we have, you know, everything covered for ninety bridge, and then we start looking to see what the original bond can cover for these other projects.
So that, a, a follow-up question to that comment, although I had it in mind from the beginning. Um, when we presented to town meeting the, the, the outline of the, the four million for the Bridge Street project, and, you know, these are the, what's going to go on with the waterfront bond in twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, was this in it? Was this in those calculations that we showed as, um, things that we were going to access the waterfront bond for?
It was certainly within one of the projects that we're talking about.
Yeah, that's the question. That's all.
Not, not for the four million, but was going.
I'm sorry?
Uh, it, it wasn't part of that.
No, it wasn't part of the four million. I'm talking about what you were going to do with the rest of the, assuming we got authorization, uh, with the rest of the waterfront bond.
Right. So that, we did not spell out specifically, like, the allocation of
Right.
the original bond, because it couldn't cover everything.
Right.
Um, and like, for example, Little Mill Pond Pier, that's being covered under, uh, CPC funds versus that original twenty seventeen. So we're still exploring where things are coming from, but the walkway was one of the projects we're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I moved that the select board authorized the town manager to proceed with procurement for engineering services estimated at ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty. Call it a hundred grand, and solicit bids through a request for proposal process for the, for the construction. And they, to come back to the select board with final numbers.
Second.
All those in favor. Before I call the vote, I just want to say, I, I thought your, uh, your, your memo was very clear and, and, and really laid out what you're doing here. And, and I just want to give you a gold star for that. Thank you very much.
Further comment on that note, and you made fun of your own presentation, but the, when you, the, the folks moved over to the right under the walkway.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive.
I, I, I give you kudos there. That was very well done.
That you appreciate.
No, well done.
You did that, right?
Well done.
Shiny objects.
The shiny objects. There you go.
On that note, Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Um, Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, next is the, uh, discussion of the, um, uh, the new charge for the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee. Uh, welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jason Holm, your Harbormaster. I'm joined by Jim Nash. He's the chairperson of the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee. Um, and for a quick refresh, back in December, we met, um, and discussed the possibility of the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee, uh, amending their charge. Once they had a full committee, uh, that full committee was appointed, I'm happy to say, uh, very happy with the membership. Uh, they've been meeting regularly and have had very active agendas. Uh, back in February, uh, they met and, uh, discussed some amendment changes to the charge. Um, and, uh, once they were voted upon, uh, Mr. Nash went to some of the other water-related committees, uh, to present to them as well and, and get their feedback. So, um, with that said, and I'm not sure if you want me to read what the amended charge would be, or if you had any questions on the process or, uh, the content.
Uh, we, we have it both in terms of the, how it was amended, and then the final version that's reflected in the, in the, in the minutes. Um, so questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, no, I, I think the charge is great. I, I do have some wordsmithing that I might suggest, i- i- if you would just bear with me for one, just in the second sentence. Um, uh, the committee should convene at least quarterly throughout the year to discuss and make recommendations on or about Aunt Lydia's Cove, the trap dock at Stage Harbor, and commercial fishing industry interests within the town of Chatham at either their initiative or at the request of the select board. Just, just a little wordsmithing. I, I just think it's cleaner, that's all. Yeah. So I'll read that again. The committee should convene at least quarterly throughout the year to discuss and make recommendations on or about Aunt Lydia's Cove, the trap dock at Stage Harbor, and commercial fishing industry interests within the town of Chatham at either their initiative or at the request of the select board. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And.
Go ahead. Yeah, please.
Two cents.
So it doesn't make sense to be called the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee anymore, correct? Have you guys come up with anything? Because I have a thought.
We, we haven't discussed that yet. We, we, it was brought up, but at this point, we were waiting for your direction, whether this was going to happen.
Well, we haven't voted on it yet.
Right.
If it does, I'd like to make a recommendation on the name change.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want to do that separately, or just as part of this?
Well, we can throw, I can throw it out there.
Yeah.
Um, I had two suggestions. The Working Waterfront Pier Committee, or the Working Waterfront Advisory Committee.
And just to clarify what you're, what you're driving at, you want that done before you guys are going to vote on the changing of the charge, or?
No, 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 no.
Right. I, I'm assuming we're.
We'll, we'll do them both.
Hopefully have a positive result here tonight, and then we'll, we'll discuss it. It was brought up, but we wanted to get, like I said, this done first.
Yeah, Corey, go ahead.
No, no, I just want to give my two cents worth, because I, I very much appreciate the, the members of, or the new members of the Cove Committee. Um, you know, we put a, got, um, a request out, and we said we had o- open seats. We wanted people to be engaged. We want a balance of representation to kind of, um, fill the, uh, committee seats to keep the communication and the, the advocacy going. And we've had people step up, and they've been engaged. We've had regular meetings, uh, good conversations. They're willing to, to engage in these conversations. At, I, I thought, I certainly believe they have their, some of their ideas they want to approach the, you know, the board with. And I think we are, um, we'll have our own, um, concepts that we want to bounce off you guys. So I just want to thank you, because, um, I wasn't sure what directions was going to go in, and we're heading in a very positive direction. And, uh, I appreciate the, the efforts of the committee members.
Well, I, I, speaking on the committee's behalf, I think that we would like to thank all of you for having the foresight of letting us continue on and rebuild the committee.
We appreciate it. And, um, it, it's my understanding you guys vetted it through all the other waterways committees, waterways, South Coastal.
Yes, I've been to South Coastal, Waterways, and Shellfish, and they've all had positive, nothing but positive things to say.
Yeah, that's great.
You know, a few recommendations that we would take up if this happened, but, uh, it was all positive.
That's great. And, you know, in the future, if, if we do adopt this, that, you know, the representation broadens a little bit here, because you've got interest on the east side and the south side that might want to be able, it could sit on this committee. And, um, and that would be probably a, a more balanced look at it in the future. But, um, for right now, it's, you guys are rocking it.
Thank you.
I hear.
We've gone from rebuilding the committee to expanding it?
No, not expanding it, but enhancing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, when the opportunity arises.
Right. Right. So do, do we want to take?
I move we accept.
Somebody want to move the change?
We accept the, the new charge as amended by select board member Dykens.
Right.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Now, do you want to take up the name?
Yeah. So let, I threw two out there. I, I mean, I'm not married to it, but I thought it was a kind of a logical looksee at, at what, what they were doing. And so I just thought either pier or advisory committee on the other end of working waterfront made some sense to, to me.
I like the second one.
The advisory committee?
Yep, I like that. Working waterfront advisory committee.
I'm fine.
That, that, you know, encapsulates, you know, Stage Harbor, the Fish Pier. I mean, it's great. It's, it's good. I like it. Working waterfront, love it.
Okay. Take a motion.
I move approval.
Do you want to, it's Working Waterways Advisory?
No. Working Waterfront Advisory Committee.
Working Waterfront Advisory Committee.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
And Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Good job, you guys.
Yep, excellent. Um, mooring software, there you go. You're on. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. Um, I'll apologize first for not having the PowerPoint prowess of my boss. Um, animated cartoons, uh, in this production tonight, but, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you guys and present, uh, an update on our mooring management software.
You have very pretty pictures there, though.
Thank you. I do what I can. Um, so, uh, I can put my glasses on here. So a little bit of history. Um, prior to utilizing this system, uh, we used a couple of different programs. Uh, Microsoft Access for years, uh, which is a very comfortable program that was internal. Uh, it worked well for us, but, uh, in an effort to want to expand the capabilities of the program to the public, to be able to renew online and modernize our mooring management, uh, we experimented with another system for a few years that was, um, it was a permitting system, but it wasn't specifically designed for moorings. So, uh, while it, it had some, uh, some positive components to it, uh, there were other areas that just didn't work for that particular function. Um, so we went back to Microsoft Access for a few years while we researched some other options. Um, after extensive research, we found there's basically almost two industry standards of mooring management programs out there. Um, we heard presentations from both. We spoke with a lot of other communities, uh, and decided on, uh, mooring info, which is now LinksLog. Um, they changed their name because they started expanding their services beyond just harbor management and mooring management as well. So you'll know them now as, as LinksLog. Um, and back in twenty twenty in the fall, uh, we went live for calendar year, uh, two thousand twenty-one. Um, and that focus was to give the customers the ability to renew online and assist us with going paperless and having a, uh, a more robust mooring management program. Um, so just some statistics, uh, for everyone to see kind of what this system handles. Um, these are approximate permits that are processed through the system. So, uh, you know, roughly thirteen hundred wait lists, uh, twenty-two hundred private mooring permits, uh, about eight hundred and fifty boatyard permits. Uh, we moved the Fish Pier docking permits, uh, approximately approximately 350 waterways user permits, for a total of approximately 4,700 permits a year that are processed through this system.
Does that include all the moorings, Jason?
Yes.
And so, does, how much of that are town moorings?
We have 28 town moorings, I believe.
Includes about all the waterways?
Transients are kept separate from this system, they're run through DAW.
Okay, and how many transients do we have now?
There's, skip to know off the top of your head. There's 20 or so, right now. And so, those are booked and kept through a different system than this. So, a couple of the components about this, financially, customers get sent an electronic invoice by email, and it gives them the option to pay online. The benefit is that every transaction done in that system is easily accessible. So, routinely, we are asked to verify payments, and this system allows us to pretty easily verify payments or non-payments. Roughly every year, we process about $500,000 through here worth of revenue. And to date, we've brought just under $2 million through the system in the past four years.
Do we pay the credit card fee, or does the user pay it?
Those are absorbed by the user, and the system itself, the fees are paid by the user itself. So, there's a service fee that's done, so the town pays nothing.
So, that's an add-on.
Program.
Yeah, thank you.
So, waitlist is another great feature of this. This is probably the best internal feature for us, because once the waitlists are renewed online, there's really nothing else for us to do. You can go on at any time and request your waitlist. It gives us a notification, we go in, we accept payment, approve it, and then you're able to go in and see where you're at on the list. You're able to manage your renewals and so forth as they go through.
Has that list moved along faster with the system?
The system doesn't have anything to do with how quickly the list moves. It does help us organize the assignment process, and that we can query certain reports that really help us put it out there as far as what we're going to do. But we've, we were very active with assignments last year. Thursday, we're meeting to go over assignments for this year, so those will be coming out. And we're looking to do at least two more assignment periods this year, very similar to what we did last year. So, as I noted earlier, a couple of permits that are kept in here are the private mooring permits in the boatyards, as well as docking permits. They all have different renewal periods, private moorings and boatyards, and the docking permits are all kind of different times. So, with those, the customer gets sent an email with a reminder. There's a payment link and invoice information. And one of the benefits of this program also is that it allows us to send bulk emails out to customers if they have outstanding balances, and to keep track of emails sent, delivered, and opened. And that's actually really important when it comes down to customers contesting perhaps that they didn't receive a notification. We can look to see if they actually opened the email that's sent. So, it's been pretty helpful for us to resolve some renewal issues. Waterways user permits are on here, too. Last year, Ryan at IT was super helpful of developing a QR code for us. So, we put a couple of signs at different town landings to where you can scan the QR code or hit a hot link to the town website to be able to buy the waterways user permit there. So, it helps some of the customers to get caught not realizing that they may need one when they get there. You know, it could be after hours, it could be off-season. But it gives them the ability to be able to scan that quickly and gain their permit. And then, they can either pick it up at the office, or we'll mail it to them in the mail, and they'll have an electronic receipt that they renewed that. Couple of just statistics on the breakdown of payments. It's been pretty consistent since the inception of the program. There's been small increments every year of increase. But we're sitting right about 75% of the customers that renew online, and about 25% that renew traditionally by check. So, those numbers, like I said, within a couple of percentages have been the same since we started back in 2020. So, this year of the 2,139 mooring permits, 29 did not have an email address listed. So, it's 1.4% that aren't utilizing that portion of the program or the system. Of the 1,331 waitlists, six do not have email addresses and aren't using that for a 0.5%. And grand total out of the 3,470 permits, 99% of them are using that function of the system. System pros, online renewability, that's huge. As we are getting modernized, more and more people are wanting to, that ability to do that. It also helps them if they remember after hours, or when it's coming down to due dates, they can renew at the touch of their hand. The alerts and bulk customer notices have been huge, and we're still expanding ways on how to take advantage of that. It could be, for instance, some of you may know that this year, the, kind of the sunset clause on the blue foam for mooring floats went into effect January 1st. So, back in the fall, we started utilizing this system to email the float dock customers, the boatyards, the haulers, and to let them know that that was going to be going into effect. So, those types of notifications are helpful in addition to other needs. We do try not to abuse that, because we don't want people to get too accustomed to see any emails from us. But it is very helpful in certain situations for that. It also helps us track expired boat registrations and mooring inspections. Obviously, those are due whenever they're expired, need to be renewed. So, this helps us track and put notes on the renewal forms themselves, so let the customer know that we need that information to be able to renew their permit. So... System cons, customer support can be inconsistent sometimes. They've got a new programmer that's really done a great job of kind of resolving some of those, but for a while, it definitely was inconsistent. Sometimes when they have new rollouts, there can be a system glitch in other areas. Those are usually very easily resolved, it's just a matter of catching it and calling them. Like any other software, there's access from different internet platforms sometimes that are a little tricky, or people that will cut and paste. And then the archive data, a little difficult for us and just internally to view. We have to get reports from them and so forth. So, the customer doesn't necessarily see that, that's just more internally for us, and we've been able to work our way around those. But those are some of the, some of the cons of the system. Again, I mentioned earlier that there is kind of two industry standards really for this, and these are a lot of the communities that utilize the system. You'll recognize a lot of them locally on the Cape, and there's several that are very similar communities to us as far as waterfront usage and different, and different needs from the system. So, some communities use it for their shellfish departments, other ones use it for their incident reports. Some use it for transient moorings. So, there's different uses within the system, and we experimented with a few of those ourselves. We've kept the things that we've liked, and we've kind of chucked the things that we didn't in favor of the things that seem to be working really well for us. And so, over the past four years, the system's proven to be capable of meeting our mooring management needs and requirements, as well as providing our customers the ability for them to be able to renew online. So, overall, we're happy, but can always improve.
Shereen, go ahead.
When, when you're, this is just back, back office stuff, but, you know, when you're, can you query data out of it? Like, like, you know, know how many, you know, 20, under 20-foot boats are, and what mooring, when?
Oh, yes. It's a very, the reports in there are very detailed, whether it be financial or being able to cultivate information out of there. It's very easily broken down for us to be able to digest, so...
Has it, has it provided opportunity for you to make, you know, improvements or any changes?
I think so. You know, there's still some things that we're experimenting on the way to use. So, this is a remote-based system, so we could log into it from, you know, we have smartphones that our boat operators carry with us. So, in the past, when we would go out to do mooring enforcement or mooring work, we'd have to call back to the office, have them look up different numbers and so forth. Now, that ability's in the palm of your hand, and you can make changes there. And we're really trying to look at expanding on some of that type of capability as well. For our mooring assignments, being able to run the reports and pull up that information to transfer to a spreadsheet has been extremely helpful for us to get a really nice visual. Skip and Susan's done a really good job of working together and really kind of pulling out what they can out of the system this year to really maximize the benefit. So, you know, a lot of credit goes to them for the work that they've put into it and the cooperation that they've had together to really try to maximize what we've gotten so far.
Great, thanks, Jason.
You're welcome. Jeff?
Yeah, I originally asked for kind of a follow-up on this. It's great to hear it's working well. I also think it's a good example of how if something doesn't work, we kind of pivot, and we find something that does. We struggled with it at the beginning from 2013 to 16 or so. I think we really struggled with this stuff. There were a lot of complaints. So, I think by securing this system, getting it implemented and up and running, I use it, it's great. It's very easy to use, and the fact that it's informative and helps you manage a very complicated, you know, 4,700 permits with 3,000 some odd moorings, and wait, 1,300 waitlists, 2,000 moorings. I mean, it's a lot of action. So, I think if we didn't have this, we'd be really up against it. So, I'm really pleased to hear that it's going well. I think it's an example of the town is really on the forefront of themselves' systems. We really try to stay in the forefront of systems. I give Jill and the Harbor Masters Office a lot of credit, but I give Jill a lot of credit, too, to stay in front of it. I do. Because this is, this is really value-added, this is value-added for everybody, so...
Thank you.
Thanks for your efforts, and thanks to the efforts of the folks in the office.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you for your time. I'm going to work on my PowerPoint ability next time, so I promise you some animation.
We want animation next time, Jason.
Okay, next case is Mr. Andrew Buckley is looking for a town landing special use permit. Yeah, I'm sorry, it's a change of use.
Change, right. Ted Kean, Coach Resource Director, I'll just briefly introduce the agenda topic. As you just indicated, this is a change in use for a special use permit, town landings. Mr. Buckley has been operating for a couple of years for the launch service that we all thought was a very desirable goal, to try to reduce usage at our parking lots and so forth, reduce dinghy storage ideally, if people had a consistent and dependable launch service. So, Andrew came forward, recommended, you know, a way to do it. He's been operating, but realizes that he needs to make some changes to really make this program work to his advantage. So, he is looking to add tours to Montemoy as a drop-off. And, you know, I think it is a reasonable change to his operation. It's been through both Harbor Master and Community Development, as far as, you know, their insight as to what impacts it may or may not have. And they've signed off on having come forward to the board for their review and discussion. So, Mr. Buckley's here, and he can brief you folks a little bit more on what he's looking to do.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
If I may, I just want to address previous agenda item. I have personally found that the mooring renewal service is very helpful. I was actually having renewed five, perhaps, permits. And it was very easy to work with the Harbor Masters Office on that, and I was able to do that from a hospital bed. So, that aside, yes, I started the launch service two years ago. Found that it was a service that whereby if I was visible, I, people would pick up on it. In fact, on the Fourth of July, two years ago, I was right at the Mill Pond Dock, right after the Fourth of July parade, and expecting that people were wanting to get out, out on the water right after the parade. And I, there was an older couple that was coming down there, and the gentleman there was trying to struggle with one of the, you know, the free dinghies that were there to be able to get to his boat. And this couple was laden down with all sorts of bags and chairs and everything else, and God knows where they, their children and grandchildren were. But the important thing was, I was there. I thought my customer was the gentleman. But instead, his wife looked over at me, looked over at her husband, and said, "Why don't you let him take us out?" And I realized that she was my customer. And he relented, and they each paid the, at the time, five bucks to be able to go out there and didn't have to risk, you know, going back and forth in a dinghy in a rush and all the rest. And that, that kind of taught me a lot, is that I had to be in the right place at the right time. And regularity was the thing. On the other hand, though, I also found out that if times were slow, or the wind was poor, or something like that, I was just there, like a cab at Logan Airport, waiting for the plane to come in. And sometimes it happened, and sometimes it doesn't, which meant that sometimes I wasn't paying for the insurance that, to be able to cover the cost. But I love it, I love being out on the water, I love being able to help people, and there's just got to be some other way to be able to balance that cost out. And so, having gotten a permit from Montemoy, which is nice to see that their personnel is still there, I've been able to do that, and as far as I know, and from what they tell me, I'm the only person permitted to be able to bring people out there to the wildlife refuge. So, that's what I'm, I'm seeking to add that, so that I can just continue the service for the town.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, Andrew, now, do you take them down to the lighthouse? We need to help folks.
There are, the permit from the feds is very specific locations. And to be honest, trying to land people on Montemoy can be a trick.
Yeah.
And so, usually, it's the, what they call the lighthouse landing.
Yeah.
There's a little, they have a mooring there. Typically, just bring people down, you know, they're there for two hours maybe. And often, I don't even leave, I just hang out there, eat a sandwich, and they, they go out to the lighthouse, they come on back. You know, it breaks, when someone gets, if someone's in touch, you know, I would say that, I was, I actually had been asked even to bring the lighthouse keeper out there, the volunteer that goes as well. But it would be, the, the, obviously, I can't land anybody in the nesting area, and so much of the area is signed off, so that you can't do that anyway. So, it's either Montemoy Point, if the weather's nice.
If you can do it.
Yeah, yeah, but otherwise, it's, it's a trick. You know, they, if you try to land somebody on Montemoy anyway, and I've had this happen myself, it seems like no matter which way the direction, the wind is, it's always coming from the southwest.
That's true. One trip a day, do you do, two trips a day you're planning, or?
It, 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 it's a matter of logistics. You know, I remember I was just going out with some friends last summer, and it seemed like half the, half the summer, it was blowing very, very hard. Unfortunately, it's, that's not a scheduled service versus doing a, doing the launch service, which has to be very predictable. You know, you want to be, when you want to go out to your boat, you know, if I'm not available, someone's going to take a dinghy, and therefore, it defeats the whole purpose.
Thanks, Andrew.
Shereen.
Andrew, it's been blowing for a year and a half. It has been. Anyway, so you're here because of the change of parking situation, too. So, can you tell us a little bit about?
Oh, sure, sure. And the great thing is, is that having gotten in touch with Chatham Valet, obviously, Mill Pond Town Landing is right, right around the corner from them. However, they told me that they bring people as far as the cornfield. And so, which, which isn't quite Vineyard Ave, but it certainly covers Stage Harbor and all the rest. So, if people are parking, you know, come into town, park downtown, they can take that to Stage Harbor or Bridge Street, or whatever, whatever is, you know, within that range. That really solves the problem, along with Lyft and Uber and all the rest. So, that way, if people are coming to town to do bird watching, you know, from far away, and they want to put, you know, Montemoy's every birder's bucket list, if they're doing that, they can be right downtown. And then after that, I can't tell you, you know, how many times I've simply, you know, met people down there, down at the Oyster River, and they say, "Where's a good place to go to lunch?" So... But that's, you know, that, that pretty much solves the issue. It's not like in years past when you would have had to call a taxi.
Dean? Were you done?
I am done, sorry.
Thank you. Andrew, I just want to ask one question. So, does the launch depart from different locations, or is there a fixed location?
Yeah, what I tried to do rather than, to encourage people to not overcrowd town landings with their dinghies, is to be able to serve all the town landings in the Stage Harbor complex. So, that was from Oyster Pond Furlong all the way around to the Mill Pond. That's five miles. And if you do that at five miles an hour, obviously, if someone wants to be picked up in the Mill Pond, and I'm in the Oyster Pond, I can tell them how long it's going to take, an hour. It's turning out that the demand for the furlong is just not there. So, that allows me to kind of adjust things as need be. But I try to, I try to, I have to be visible, go back and forth, and, you know, I bought a giant flag, about as big as that one, there to put, that had our logo on it, and I just go back and forth with it. And people remark about that. I'm either there, or if I'm at Oyster Pond, oh, sorry, Oyster River, or, or at Stage Harbor. You know, people, it doesn't click until they actually see me there, they realize I'm an option.
Thank you. I just wanted to make the comment, Shereen can remember this, because we both served on the Elders Garage Committee. One of the elements, and the full board will remember this, too. One of the elements of their recommendations was that to try to maintain the Elders Garage property as a transportation center. So, I think this... So I think this is kind of in keeping with that history. Anyway, I'm very supportive of.
It's a short, it's a short walk.
Anything else? Take a motion?
Jeff?
Mr. Chair, I respect the request that the board approve this town landing special use permit.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nick Castro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
And Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you, we'll see you out there.
Okay. So we are to the town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you have your report that was included in your packet. Couple of cool things happening. The 2025 Community Impact Award was issued by the Mass Recreation and Parks Association this past week to our Community Services Recreation and Beaches Division for the new pickleball courts and the efforts that they have made with having a Friends of Chatham Pickleball and there's a Chatham Pickleball Board and it's very inclusive. And so that was one of the presentations for outstanding service for a program or an event in the community. Also, we just heard this week, too, we had the Natural Resources Nitrogen Sensitive Areas Grant Award. Greg and his team have been awarded one hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred for, under the Mass Department of Environmental Protection, Mass DEP Natural Resources for Nitrogen Sensitive Areas Grant. And this is, bear with me, for performing activities which address solutions to cultural eutropification caused by nitrogen reduction from wastewater and other sources. And so this is, yes, great news for Natural Resources Department and Greg's effort as well. Another part is so much, somewhat of our spring cleaning. So we're working on our hydrant flushing and that's the process to remove sediment and microorganisms that accumulate over time and could potentially discolor our water. So that's targeted for the areas on roads south of Route 28, Main Street, as well as roads north of Route 28, Orleans Road, including Morris Island and Stage Island areas. And then our first annual water quality report has been issued by our new operator, Violia. It's called On Tap and that's available with the link in the monthly report as well as on the website. And then, I know you've seen a lot of us lately, Kathy and I, we were able to get the warrant. It was posted yesterday for the annual town meeting coming up on Saturday, May 10th, at 11:00 a.m. at the Monomoy Regional Middle School Gymnasium. And I want to thank Kathy for her efforts, Shauna, Carrie, and Julie, our town clerk. Everyone dug in deep to review it. It was posted and if there's any corrections, just give us a week and let us know. But we've, we're really proud of our efforts with that and the amount of information so voters are able to come prepared to town meeting. And then we have our employee years of service for April. The highest longevity is Steve Leavenworth, who you might know from our transfer station as our heavy equipment operator for over thirty years, as well as Sergeant Massey for, in our police department as our school resources officer for the last twenty years. And then we have quite a trough of those who've been here for eight years, six to eight years. And then as we look to Mark Van Bork, our media coordinator on Chatham TV, he's also been here for six years in April, so congratulations to him. And then many of our newer employees. The most recent hire was Karen Chimoza, who's our housing inspector and administrator for our short-term rental registration program. Then we recently hired Danielle James for an adult supportive day program and she's a part-time program administrator working along with Joe Fennell. And then we have, sorry, we have Chris Missoulis, who's our finance administrator. I know you've seen the introduction of him. So he'll be working in the finance office and also at the permit office, the sticker office, per se. And that's expanding our hours at the sticker office. And also, he's working to modernize some of the processes. So he's done a lot in just a few weeks that he's here. And you might know his grandmother, she owns an inn, I think it's called the Bow Roof, the Bow Roof House, so longtime family and he grew up in Chatham. So we were really excited to have him. And then we recently hired Dan Dearing as a firefighter EMT. And he's participated in a really cool program in Southern Maine Community College where they actually live at the firehouse. He has deep root connections to Orleans as well. And then you saw a glimpse of him tonight, Ted Keon, he's announced his retirement. The official date is April 18th and that's after twenty-seven years of service and forty years of service in public sector. So we'll get details on retirement plans and get-togethers and last coffees and we'll have that soon. And Ted's had a really great career with the town. And then the next section is just listing project updates as a table of contents, where to find those, more, the updated details on those. And then we listed here the Chatham TV protections, we call them must-see TV. So something on the transfer station, the seafowl walkthrough and backstage on sewer ring. And the sewer one in particular is really interesting because there's a component with Greg Bourbon, our director of natural resources, talking about nitrogen reduction. And then you have Rob Failey, our DPW director, talking about the operations and planning side, including the next phases. So the two of them are working really hard to get a user-friendly map so people can look to see possibly what phase their house or property might get sewed. And this has been something we've been working for about five years and it's finally coming to fruition. And then you have our e-community engagement with Shawna Neely. She's doing a really great job increasing our subscribers and the length of time people spend on our electronic platforms. And the rest of the report is an update for the month of February. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Jeff?
Jill, yeah, this, as you know, I think it's a great report. I did have a question, it's on page forty-one, on the Cape Cod Water Resources Restoration Projects. I was delighted to see that Ryder's Cove Herring Run is being attended to. And there was an RFP issued, I didn't know whether we've gotten that back yet and whether there were plans to have that work done soon, before the herring run or is it going to be later on? I just, it's really, it's been very dysfunctional for a number of years. It's really great to see some attention being paid to it.
Yeah, I'll look into that and get right back to you.
Yeah, I mean, that's wicked exciting, but herring are going to be arriving here shortly, so.
They are here.
Yeah, they are here, okay, thank you. Question, thank you.
Anything else?
No, just a good report.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you. If there's nothing else, take a motion.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nick Castro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
And Mr. Metters.
Aye.
We are adjourned, good night, Chatham, it is seven eleven.